Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a special city council meeting with two items on the agenda. The Aaron Term Motors Event Center contract and our 2022 budget. And thanks for all the departments who could make it to come here today. The elected body here, the council and the mayor have asked you to come here. It takes time out of your day to talk about the budget because we're going to be finalizing it pretty soon. And some of the councilors, as well as myself, have some questions about some of your capital equipment requests and how that got fettered out for the final proposal by our finance director and finance department regarding the budget. And so we have draft number four of the budget, which is the most current draft, and it shows basically a synopsis or just a final number of what is proposed to be included in the 2022 budget. So with that being said, I'm going to first turn it over to our finance director, Sherri Erickson, and then if our city administrator would like to chime in, Britt C. Bennis. And then I know we'd like to hear from the department heads about the capital equipment requests, the ones, your requests on the budget that not just capital equipment, but other things that may or may not have been included in the 2022 budget allocation. We'd like you to express to us your concerns or your final plea for the funding that you may or may not have received. So, thank you. Sherri?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, we really can't go up. We can only cut. So our proposed levy was set at 3% over this year for 2022. So if you're looking at things on the second page, it's basically all the departments. The capital column is highlighted in yellow. And yes, we did, when I say "we," Britt and myself, and we worked with some of the department heads, told them ahead of time that, hey, this is your, we're going to have to cut here, and here's your new department head printout in detail, which, by the way, I do have this here. If anybody has questions on line items, please feel to ask me, and we will look them up. To start off with, you'll see on the general government, the main capital item that was left in is for City Hall, and that's the HVAC system. And I don't know if Kurt is here. But we also got word after this happened, after the proposed levy was sent into the county, that we have about a $200,000 roof repair coming up here soon. So that's something to keep in the back of the mind, besides the HVAC system. So that's not in this year's budget. So what we're hoping to do is in year 2023, when our capital, we will do another bond for major equipment that we could not afford on an annual basis. And I think everybody has gotten the 10-year capital outlay, if I recall. This big, long sheet here. You'll see it down in the very fine print, due to cash flow shortages and the capital budgets were cut these years, and you'll see different years there. And in year 2025, the city shall prepare equipment bond while we're thinking of moving that up to 2023. Let's see how the council want input from the department heads. Because they're, that being said, the public safety, we did get a request yesterday from Nicole, Chief Mattson, and I don't know if he's going to come up or talk about how we're going to do this.
Sherri, once we hear from Chief Mattson, I'd like to bring the fire chief up front as well. He has a nine o'clock meeting, so we'll do that. Thank you. Chief Mattson, good morning.
We are obviously, everybody knows we don't have a garage, so our cars are running 24/7, 365 days a year, pretty much four of them. Depending on the crew size, like the truck may be parked for a couple of days, but the wear and tear on the vehicles are brand-new. Last year, we were allocated one vehicle, a 2021 Ford SUV, 6,000 miles on it, the engine blew. It's been at Lundgren's for a month and a half, obviously under warranty. We just received that back yesterday. Our two 2020 SUVs that approximately mileage-wise are between 15,000 and 25,000 right now. One had a complete transfer case redo that was under warranty, and those two vehicles were bought with the insurance money from the league from our fire with the two squads that we lost. And the second 2020 is now onboard to have a transfer case installed again. With the mileage that is on them and the hour, idling hours, you might as well double the mileage on the vehicles. Squad two is our oldest. Actual miles, I had them look yesterday, 77,000 with over 200,000 idling hours on that. That has been back and forth to our City Barnes for repairs because it's one of our main cars. And our truck also, 2018, which has paid off, that had a major chain case engine extravaganza, and that was over at Ford of Hibbing last year for almost four months before we got that back. And that, the odometer is around 60,000, and again, the idling hours, you might as well double. So I approached Sherri the other day and Britt, and we were looking to lease one vehicle in 2020. That's what we had discussed in June, and I knew money was tight. Approximately, I'm going to try a different brand this year of squads outside of Ford due to all the problems we've had with the last three years of the Ford products. This particular brand is about 10,000 cheaper per vehicle at state bid. It's a little larger, it's still an SUV. And with a three-year lease, like I said, obviously, I don't, I have the state bid price is 38,000 on the vehicle, but leasing it three years, it will not be over $13,000 a year. Right now, all of my current vehicles are paid off. I do not have a lease payment to include our, excuse me, our detective vehicles were paid off last year. So the 2021 was paid in full last year, so I had asked and requesting dire need to get one leased vehicle, and on top of that 13,000 for the next three years, the outfitting cost, I will approximate with the equipment because of COVID and uptake and everything we're ordering, price value, I would approximate from our car outfitter to be 15,000 to 17,000 dollars on top of, so that would be in 2022, the 13,000 for the lease and between 15,000 and 18,000 to outfit that car one time. And then that would carry us through where we can cycle out the squad two where my maintenance costs are going through the roof. Obviously, that does not have a warranty on it. And our 2022, with the Ford warranty, or 2020s, you're looking at about a year and a half, and I'm out of warranty on those cars as well. So that is my request. That was not in the budget in your package you're looking at right now. And just, I know someone had asked about fuel cost, so I pulled all the way back from 2015 when we had a garage and still four cars of similar value. That year, we burnt up approximately $27,194.94 of fuel. That was 2015. 2016 was, I'll round it off, $28,000 worth of fuel. We lost our garage in 2019, $43,715 in fuel. And this year, as of November 1st, I am sitting at $38,665 in fuel, and I still have November and December left. So that is the wear and tear on these vehicles running nonstop.
Okay, thank you, Chief. What brand are you looking at?
Dodge Durango.
Dodge Durango, okay, thank you. We'll have a quick, couple of quick questions for you, and then I think this may take a little bit of time to talk about, so if you could just kind of hang in there.
Absolutely.
After we answer the questions, and then we'll see, get the fire chief up as we can get to his meeting, and then we'll come back to that. Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for getting the gas issue, because I think that's really significant. If we were to, well, we still won't have the garage, so we're still going to be burning through that fuel regardless for '22. When do you foresee being able to maybe utilize the garages? Their plans for completion, like a completion date?
Britt?
In '22?
Yes. I just got an email yesterday that they were...
I read through most of that from...
Yep. I got an email last night that they were verifying two more things, and then they're down to getting us the final payment, hopefully soon this week.
So that might offset, say if we, did they give a projected date of completion on that from S E H? Or no, they're the architects, so we had to go for bid.
I think the, the, no, and I wish Matt was here. I don't remember that the construction timeline was three months, four months? It wasn't very long.
I was right. I want to say it was about four, four at the most, if I recall.
So, so once that garage is built, how many vehicles will be able to fit in there? And then, I'm trying to offset the gas and then justify the lease.
Four?
We, no. We are losing because of the historic wall, about three feet of space. So Britt, quote me if I'm not right, they're planning on where we can stack three vehicles. I think they're extending it here a little bit, so we would have three cars inside able to park, you know, and leave them where they can download and let us, you know, be shut off.
So maybe, maybe two vehicles running 24/7?
I would say yes.
About two? So that'll cut down tremendously. So then, could we in fact afford the lease payment, once the garage is done, if it's a three-month completion date? We're saving the, it's probably going to be more because gas prices are, keep going up.
Well, if I can include two from the October 31 budget that was sent out to me, completion for the year, I was at, I am at 83.23%, so I still have a surplus of $600,000. I realize I still have payroll left in November and December, and most of our major bills, like our RMS system, has been paid. We have a couple of, we ordered some ballistic plates that are going to be about $4,000. But in my math, my math skills, I would project I'd still have about $250,000 left this budget year. Unfortunately, we had two people leave we weren't planning, so there was a little offset there. So with that being said, like I said, I'm not planning any more major purchases the end of the year, just the routine cost of, like I said, payroll and, you know, what comes up. So I'm hoping, with that being said, I can offset, you know, and I understand that goes back in the general fund at the end of the year, but we were very conservative on our purchases this year, trying to stay under budget.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Chief. If you could just have a seat for a moment, we need to get Chief Lewis out of here by nine o'clock. He needs to, and then we'll bring you back up and have some discussion. I think Councilor Paulson has some more discussion than I do as well. Obviously, there's a need to figure this out, make sure you get what you need. Chief?
Good morning. Thank you very much. I guess I was looking over the capital outlay for, the 20-year capital outlay and the larger sheet that you got there. So I wanted to clarify first that there is an ambulance included for capital in next year's budget. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. And I would really request that there should be an ambulance. If we miss a year where there's an ambulance not included, that sets us back quite a ways. That's happened in the past. The maintenance and the ongoing fees that are associated with the current ones that we have, we're putting more miles on them than ever. When you miss a year for replacing the ambulance, it really, really has an impact on our operations. So I would request that that ambulance be added back in there. I do notice that when I look over the operational budget, though, that the '21 through '22 budget, there's about a $600,000 increase. So I'm, I was thinking that maybe that was included in that. So if you look at your draft number four, which is the latest budget that you have, you'll...
And can I just inject, sorry?
Yep.
He's under special revenue, so it's going to be on your third page?
Got you. And so I did see an increase, again, on the fire side, but not on the, not on the ambulance side. So there's $96,000 in capital outlay that's for the Lucas devices, which was what I requested back in June. But these six new Lucas devices, while they will expire, they can operate beyond their expiration date. It's not like a medication where we absolutely, you know, they drop dead or anything. So we could spread those out over a few years. The new ambulance, though, really is our priority. That, you know, I'll take any questions on that, I think, before moving on to anything else. There are some other vehicles that would be very, very nice. We do need to replace engine three, which pulls the USAR trailer. If we can't get our USAR equipment to the scene, it really doesn't do us a lot of good to have brand-new equipment sitting in trailers which can't move. That vehicle is quite old and is quite unreliable, and a couple of years ago, it sat in a parking lot at FDIC in Indianapolis because it couldn't be started. It has had a number of mechanical problems. So that would be the next priority. But the ambulance is very, very important. We're, like I said, we're racking up the costs with just keeping, we've had two and three ambulances at a time down. If you look at it, we're putting close to 300,000 miles a year on those ambulances combined, and we are getting more miles out of them in the past. We were only getting about just over 200,000 in the past. These new bodies and new frames are allowing us to stretch that to 300,000. But if you miss a year, that, it takes quite a hit. So I'll take any questions, I guess, this time on the necessity of an ambulance being in next year's budget.
Anyone?
Mayor?
Yes, Sherri?
Just like to add that, the reason why you don't have an ambulance budgeted for this year for 2022 is because you received two ambulances, unexpected, last year.
So those weren't unexpected. Those were done by a grant funding that I applied for and received under the CARES Act funding. One of those ambulances was for 2020, and one was for 2021. We're talking about 2022. Again, we would be missing a year. So while we did receive two ambulances in one year, one was for 2020 and one was for 2021. We're not doubling up. That's, that's been verified, and I've said that a number of times already. So are there any questions?
First, Council Johnson, and then over to Council Paulson. Council Johnson?
Thank you. That was going to be my question about the two ambulances. So were we, had we budgeted for ambulances in 20 and 21?
Correct. Every year, we put in 275,000 as a budget request for an ambulance.
Requested, we have not, I don't know that we had approved that, but that was requested every year.
Okay. So we have not budgeted, or have we budgeted for those?
Not for 2022. There is no ambulance budgeted.
Okay. Did we budget for that in 2021 without knowing about COVID?
If you take a look back and answer Council Johnson's question, because I think every year, if I remember correctly, one was budgeted in 2020, one budgeted 2021, and there were questions for the budget in 2022. So if you could check on that for Council Johnson. Council Johnson, please continue.
So what are the ages of our ambulances right now?
We can go back in, or five years. So one, two, three, four, and five years old. Sixteen.
I'm just trying to balance. I understand the logic of getting a new one every year, but if we have to, you know, I've been on the ambulance, I get it, but it's the whole big picture. So that, and then my other question, what other vehicles would be available to pull the trailer? Are there no other newer vehicles that could be switched out for what their current purpose is versus what the need for having one to pull the USAR trailer?
No, because of the hitch system and because of the brakes, braking system that was required for the weight of the vehicles, you really want a heavier vehicle to pull those. And so the only other thing that we could do would be to set up like the rescue rig, I believe, that would, that would be heavy enough to pull that, but you don't want to, you don't want to hook the chief's vehicle, the USAR trailer, that'd push it down the road at every type of turn. So there is a braking system that needs to, that needs to be hooked up with that and lighting systems, but we don't have the heavy, the heavy axled vehicles to pull those, those trailers. And remember, these, these trailers contain shoring, they contain struts, they contain a lot of heavy...
I've seen exactly what's in them. I, you know, I guess I would ask that we look at some creative multipurpose vehicles when it comes to pulling trailers. The, the actual number of times the USAR trailer is being called out for a emergent situation as opposed to a training situation, I guess I would just want that looked at and see if we can be creative when it comes to how do we utilize a vehicle that can be multipurpose in the future.
Do you have some contacts at the state that have some surplus vehicles, too, that have been used?
I guess that's what I'd look for is creative uses, you know, we're, we're in this perfect storm of, of things happening where the police department, you know, they're literally scraping through snowbanks to get to their vehicles that are running 24/7. And, you know, it's as taxing when it's 97 degrees in the summer on those vehicles as it is when it's 40 below in the, in the wintertime. And not having the ability to house them properly is really a challenge. So I hope we can start fixing all of these things all at once. Those are all the questions I have for you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the other two councilors, the question for me is that, having experience in putting together a vehicle replacement schedule or capital equipment schedule, it, you know, those vehicles that are, it's not about how old they are, it's how much use they get, how many miles they got, what's the recommendation, you know, for safety issues with respect to how many miles to be putting on these vehicles. So if you have a Grader that's 15 years old and you only got 500 hours on it, you can continue to operate as long as you can still maintain it from a maintenance perspective. But when you, when you start deviating from a vehicle replacement schedule, from my experience, down the road, it just multiplies itself and it creates a problem. Pretty soon that you, pretty soon you delay one, and then all of a sudden, there's another one that has to be replaced, and you fall farther and farther behind, and pretty soon you're two or three vehicles in the, in the hole, and now you're in a position where we didn't use that process moving forward. And this might be one example of how we do creative work, as Council Johnson says. But my concern is not for the other vehicles, because you have the USAR, you have opportunities we could apply for grants, whatever the case may be, to help accommodate that as quickly as we can. But it's the ambulance issue for me that is of concern, because if you delay, then pretty soon you get farther behind, even though you got two, one for '20 and one for '21, even though we budget one for every year, it's a vehicle replacement. One's five years old, it's got hundreds of thousands of miles on it, then you get a new one, and it just rotates through, just like you do with police vehicles. And we had to, we got to that crunch where we didn't purchase those police vehicles, and all of a sudden, we had to purchase more. And then we started leasing vehicles because we couldn't afford to buy them. And now that we're, it took us a while to get to where we're at, now we're at the point, now where these vehicles that the police department has, you know, the mileage and the, and the uses, and we knew that as elected body, the hours of, the hours are going to be used because we had to have the garage. We knew there's going to be toll, and we were told that's going to be the case. And now we're here right now, and it's not budgeted for, so we have to find a creative way in which to accommodate, to ensure that you have the vehicles you need moving forward. So same thing goes true for the fire department as well. So with that being said, I'll go to Council Paulson, then over to Council, beyond his Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Sherri, how are these classified, or Chief Lewis, how are these classified under the heading on the capital outlay? Is it considered a vehicle lease? I'm, I'm going through both the original one that Sherri had given us. I don't know what date this was, Sherri, but I'm not seeing...
Yeah, that's old, old data. I mean, I would only use it for reference back, too.
Yeah, and that's what I'm using, because there's two columns. The one is under the fire department, and then it says, Fire Department Building slash Equipment. And it looks like what you did here with the, with this new document is it rolled up into itself.
There's an ambulance. If you see the ambulance department's right underneath administrative, administration, left-hand column lists the labels of the departments.
Yep. Is it under Fire Department?
Nope. It's under ambulance. We're talking about the ambulance budget right now.
Oh, right up top. Very first column. Okay. So I'm just...
Councilor Paulson, to clarify, you, you are correct that the, on the fire department one and the fire department building, they do appear to be rolled into one on the newest sheet.
But they're, and the totals are different from what I'm seeing.
They are, and I, I'm still trying to figure out all of those. A lot of them were combined, but some of them have some significant increases.
2022 is, I think, the column that actually isn't combined from the old one, because that was, the old column was 190, 195,000 for turn arc gear, thermal imaging camera, E tools, and then down below, under Fire Department Building slash Equipment, was 60,000. Then if you go to the column from the new sheet, under Fire Department 2022, it's $670,000.
Supposed to be 67,000 to match what's on Sherri's budget for, to match what's on this sheet.
Oh, shit. Freddie and I are very disappointed. We thought we were getting $670,000. We did scratch our heads over that. We weren't going to say anything.
That's significant as to how we're trying to understand.
That's a typo. It's supposed to be 670,000.
Okay.
Not 670,000.
Oh, that, that's significantly...
That's a significant issue.
Yeah.
And we're here to meet about the budget, and I know you have to go, but it's hard when we get these sheets and we're trying to compare where the, where, you know, because I, what I'm assuming is that these sheets that are provided are, department heads have all given input, and you guys have all talked about this, and that's what this was. Am I correct on that?
The first time I saw this was when I pulled it out of the council agenda packet.
Oh, you should have had that 20-year, long time ago.
20 years, but haven't out for...
No, the newest updated sheet. The first time I saw the 670,000...
The typo?
Yeah. That was, that was when I pulled it out of the council agenda packet.
Okay. And I don't mean to keep you, but let's go, I guess, if we go back to the ambulance, because what I was going to say is I'm not seeing ambulance in any of those over the 20 years, but it's got its own heading, which I wasn't paying attention to, I guess. But again, the 2022 outlay for ambulance was in the original one that you passed out for $383,000, and now in 2022, it's $96,000. And when we discussed this original sheet right here, we were told that we could only minus down from it, not add, but that, that was, that 383,000 was already included with the '22 budget. So I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding.
No, yeah, the old budget, Councilor Paulson, is their original department head wishlist, and it gets pretty fat, and we have only X amount of spaces in the pie.
Right.
And so we had to trim it and say, what was your, needed? And I know that we did have a talk with Alan, Chief Lewis, earlier this summer, and going through the fact that he needed these images, imaging, certain things. So I, it wasn't just arbitrarily chop-chop.
But I mean, we just recently talked about this in the last month and a half. So how did that, where did, when you had given this sheet for 383,000, it included a new ambulance, ultrasound, flare, whatever, somebody...
Rangescopes.
CPR, mannequin, and Lucas devices. That was already included when we discussed the 3% levy?
No, we actually cut that earlier for the 3% to bring it, par it down. That was not, there was not an ambulance scheduled for this year, for next year. We, we had to cut it. And it's fine, you can put an ambulance back in there, but where are you going to cut $275,000?
I guess that's not necessarily my question. My question is, when, when we were given these sheets, and it was highlighted from, I guess from you, I was under the assumption that that was included in the 3% levy, the budget that we were working to approve, that, that those numbers, that column for 2022 was within the 3% of our levy for all of the departments, that capital outlay.
So I guess maybe there is miscommunication, because I don't know what column or what sheet you were looking at, because me and Britt actually did work on this together after we finalized it. That's why we have draft four. And help me out here, Britt, when did I give you that capital?
The capital outlay is always the wishlist of what everybody wants. That's, every year, we ask them, what do you want? And that's the wishlist. This is what the actual budget is. This is what we, what comes out of the wishlist. We, we would absolutely love to give everybody $2 million every single year of what everybody wants. That's not what the budget's going to be. The budget is never going to be a million, $2 million of capital outlays, because that's just not what we have money for.
Okay. I mean, I guess I was under the assumption that this was different, but regardless, in 2021, there was $0 for ambulance budget, because we got the ambulance, the COVID, the CARES grant funding covered that. Is that correct? So why wouldn't that roll over to 2022? I mean, I'm not trying to put anyone on the slide.
No, I know that Chief Lewis has to go here soon, but the CARES money, the COVID money came to the general fund. The general fund bought those ambulances, so technically, the ambulance department owes the general fund $500,000. But that's a totally different discussion. The CARES wasn't just for the ambulance. The COVID funds that we got came to the city. The COVID funds that we got came to the city to help with expenses, salaries, COVID expenses, name it.
And we were able to legitimately cover that, though, under those funds, and we had to spend those down within a certain period of time. And the ambulance, I mean, correct me, if you could correct me on what, how that would work, how, why would the, why would the fire department owe the general fund if those CARES grant dollars were supposed to be spread throughout all departments with any need that there was arisen that qualified under that heading? That doesn't make sense to me at all.
That's why, Julianne, if you would like to come after the meeting, I will show you the allocations and what is due to the general fund.
I'll just leave it at that. I just.
There was also MDH money that is separate from the CARES funding that Sherri's referring to that was received.
Well, I think if we're going to have this open discussion, that we need to have all the documents and all the facts in order for us to have this discussion. And I know you have to go, but I thank you for letting me ask my questions.
And before we go to Council Beyandish and Council Johnson, you know, when you talk about the budget and the CARES Act money, all those kind of things, when you talk about the budget, it's not, you have a wish list, and there's a lot of wants, but our job as elected body and staff is to narrow down what the actual need is based upon the money we have. So what is the need, not the want? And from my personal perspective, there's a need to continue with the ambulance service. Obviously, we don't have a budget of 2022. And if we didn't have the CARES Act money for 2020, '21, we bought these two ambulances, and we didn't have the money in the budget for that, right? We would be way behind on our ambulance. We'd have to buy three ambulances instead. So I think that's an issue that we as an elected body have to try to figure out, because you don't want to continue to fall farther and farther behind, whether it's ambulance, police, or public works. Council Beyandish.
And I would agree with that. Thank you. And I think I have the similar question. If that money was not expected, and it came in, and we spent it on the ambulances, where did the money go for what was already budgeted?
Once again, the mayor is right. There was no ambulance budgeted in 2021.
So that is, in our capital outlay, don't we have our equipment and our vehicles put into that?
You're talking about a vehicle replacement schedule based on the budget?
Like what he's talking about for the ambulances, yes. Doesn't that have to be in there every year so we're not gapping, and that's what we're going to do?
And that's why we're going to have to probably do a bond, because like Britt just mentioned earlier, we can't afford $2 million every year on capital equipment. We just can't. You can put this on this wish list, but your levy is at 3%. If you want, we did this, if you wanted everything that was on that original capital budget, the levy would have to be over 18%. I don't think the citizens would appreciate that.
I'm just trying to understand how that worked. And I think it would be a conversation to include the public, so we could all understand how the numbers and how everything gets worked out. Thank you.
I think, just a comment before we go, Council Johnson, that 18% levy increase, of course, we wouldn't do that, but it's, that, all that is a wish list, you know, vetting that out to what the actual needs are. You want these things, but what is the immediate need? So those immediate needs need to be addressed on the budget process, and we need to know what those immediate needs are from each individual department, so we can properly vet what our levy increase is going to be, whether it's 3%, 4%, 5%, 6%, or 7%. It's based on need, not necessarily based on what your wish list is over time. So, you know, I think that's important distinction to make. Council Johnson, and then back over to Council Paulson. Council Johnson.
Can you explain, as we've gone over the last several years, we've hired a lot of single roles and drivers and stuff, and that was supposed to equalize the budget, self-sufficient, possibly make a profit. What has happened with that process? Why is there, why is there not enough money from the ambulance fund to pay for new ambulance based on the hiring?
There actually is, if you look at the last auditor's report. We actually were in the black the last time.
But the auditor's report isn't our official books.
The auditor's report indicated there was a surplus in last year's budget. I don't have it right in front of me.
I'd like to correct that. They were restricted funds, and the ambulance department still owes the general fund over $500,000.
So again, the auditor's report indicated that last year there was a profit. The single roles have definitely helped. There's a significant amount of sick time injuries that are impacting our ability, and I see a projection of $3.8 million for next year for revenue, and I did not put that in the budget. No, that was actually in the revenue side for the.
So I just want to, excuse me. There's something going on that we're not connecting. You're actually arguing in front of the council about what's going on, and I think that needs to be corrected. When it comes down to it, Britt is the person in charge under the city, and Sherri is the finance director. And so I think that there's something going on here that is causing this angst and this argument, and I don't know what it is, and that bothers me, because numbers can be manipulated to say whatever we want them to stay. You can make a $100,000 deficit, look like a $2 million profit, if you know how to manipulate the numbers. So we're not obviously going to solve this particular part of whether or not there was and who owes what, but, and I think maybe what we need to do is do a better job of what the budget is as opposed to the capital outlay. The capital outlay seems to be, and it's been said here by several, the wish list. It's not the budget. And I don't know if there needs to be a separate spreadsheet that says, this is what the, this is what the wish list was for the next 20 years, and here's what the, actually, we did take out of the wish list. Because it's frustrating to listen to the staff argue in a public setting about what the numbers are, because my guess is that there's something, that we need to figure that out. Because I can see how, you're both right, but I can both see how there's both some interpretation of the statistics. And, you know, the other part is, is that if you've gotten a new ambulance for the last four years, and we're in desperate need of trucks for the police department, there may be a year, you need to take a sacrifice, one year, or we look at being creative, again, on how to make that work. So I'm frustrated that, that there's two, there's two things coming at us here, and I don't understand why that is. And that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Before we go back to Council Paulson, we, as an elected body, we asked these department heads to come here today to lay out what they think their needs are. I don't consider it an argument back and forth. I don't think it's an argument. I think it's a discussion. It's a dispute upon of what the budget says, and what the budget is, and the numbers, and how they operate. You know, we have our trust and faith in our staff, our administrative staff, and our department heads, they're responsible for their department. They have to come to us before us and argue their point, and that's what they're doing. So it's really not a back and forth, it's a discussion about what their needs are. We already know what the wish list says. And then I see so far, the police department and the fire department EMS have not touched on the wish list all the way down the line. They've talked about what their needs are, the immediate emergency needs, and that's what we need to hear from them, not now, but way back when, right? And so I think we have to change our process on how we do that. And Sherri and Britt worked very hard to try to put into budget and try to minimize the impact on the residents. I say we have a 3% levy increase, you look at the other levies across the range, they're a lot higher, but we have to know what the needs are. Wishing is one thing, you do a capital bond over time like we did before for the wish list to get that, but it's the immediate need that I think I'm concerned about, and that is what we're talking about today, and that's why we invited the department here to have a frank discussion to defend what they need to be doing, and then we make the final decision based upon those points that they're trying to make, whether it's to our staff or whether it's to the elected body. Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I know you need to go. Two questions. Can an ambulance be leased? I'm assuming the cost of the ambulance, if I divide the 350 by two, it's 175 grand per ambulance. Can an ambulance be leased? If it's a five-year lease, that would be 2,900 a month.
Absolutely. They've done it in the past. It can be done again.
And does your department have the budget, within the budget, to afford three grand a month?
Yeah, if you allocate it, we can definitely make that work.
That, I mean, to me, this is about a public safety need, and we do need to do better if an ambulance needs to come forward every year as a capital. I understand wish lists, like you're saying, but this is a public safety need. And I go back to the fire on Chestnut Street. This is public safety, and it's very important that we take public safety seriously and allocate resources that need to be allocated. This isn't a wish list, this is public safety. And would I be correct in making that statement?
Yeah, and you're the first one to propose that in this setting, so thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for your comments. I agree. These are discussions. You asked me as a department head to present what I believe are in the best interests of our community and our citizens. I've done that. And there are a bunch of other things on the wish list. So I appreciate the opportunity to engage in this discussion. I agree with the mayor's comments. This is a discussion. This is not an argument. But I will advocate for the needs of this community and the public safety needs as I see fit. And do I get everything I want? No. But that's just life. So I'm going to make the best argument I can to protect the citizens of this community and make sure that they do have an ambulance when they call 911, because that's when the moment of truth happens. So thank you for your time, and if anybody has any more questions, I'm going to run.
Thank you, Chief. I know that Assistant Chief Fredericson will be here if we have any other further questions with respect to that. I know that they've discussed their strategy on this meeting today. So Chief Mattson and Assistant Chief, if you want to come back up once again so we could talk about this, and while you're coming up, we have a comment from Council Bearbu.
Thank you. Finally recognized that I need to make a comment.
Well, I couldn't see your light. I can't see your light.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'm going to chastise here, okay? I don't know how many years ago it was, maybe six, seven years ago, and Ed may remember this, when we went through the similar conversation about equipment and stuff, when we had to go out and bond to catch up. And it was our own fault, because we weren't looking at stuff carefully enough to make sure that we had the needs, as the mayor said, coming forward in our budgets. Now, I assumed, and I'm wrong, that we had an ambulance budgeted for every year now. Now I find out we didn't from the conversation today, and I assume that it's my fault because I didn't look carefully enough. But I don't want to go through that scenario again of going out for a bond. It looks like we're in that same scenario to catch up with equipment for both the fire department and the police department. It's one of those things we've got to look at for the next year's budget for '23, because I don't want to go through that again. And Carl, you'll probably remember that when we went through that, and I think the mayor will remember that. That becomes a cost that maybe shouldn't have been. We should have looked at it more carefully during the budget time starting in August. Maybe we need to start the budget time earlier, so we don't get caught in this catch 22, because we're in that catch 22 again. We're going to have to, I was there, and we ran this stuff into a needs for a bond to get equipment caught up in all departments. It wasn't just public works, it was all departments, and included the fire department, if I remember correctly. And if we're putting that many miles on, that is significant. I have one other comment, and maybe Chief, or Assistant Chief Fredericson is going to answer this. Why can't we set up an electrical system off of the old garage with heavy-duty equipment to plug those vehicles? Because that's what you do in the garage, right? They're plugged in, correct? Because of the computers. Why can't we do that? So they have, like I do, to plug in my heater for my truck outside. Why can't we do that? You have cables that are so heavy-duty nowadays that, or I'm sorry, for the police department, not the fire department, I'm sorry. Why can't we set that up and do that so those vehicles can steam? Well, what would the cost be to install?
Chief, come on up. You got to come up anyway and answer Council Bearbu's question, and we'll continue with our conversation. Thanks for waiting for us, the chief. Go ahead, Council Bearbu.
The charging, if you want to say plug-ins, similar to a tank heater, but they charge the system, only put out so many amps because of all of our electrical interfaces in the car, which are more computer-based than the equipment in the squads and your rescue units. We have computers, DVRs, the cameras, so you can only put so much wattage into the car, and still in the cold weather with what's available, they will not hold a charge. There's a significant drain on the cars.
And I think if I may, Chief, and Council Bearbu, when we did tour the public safety facilities in Richfield and Minnetonka and the others, one of the main questions that was asked, and I think I asked it and got an answer from the architect, and the police department, they have underground parking, a huge underground parking for all their vehicles, and they don't plug them in like they used to because of the very same issue. They're having some very significant problems with it. So they built their facility so they could accommodate not just one or two squad cars, and that's what we'll be doing, three squad cars until we get the new facility built, is that they felt, they run the same problems that we're having now, and now that cost associated with the maintenance, the issues, all the, you know, transfer cases in the, what do you call it, the muffler, what do you call it?
ETO fluid, the converters.
And the other things, I mean, the energy efficient thing that goes in the muffler, what do you call them? I can't remember.
Catalytic converters.
Catalytic converters, thank you. So no issues with them now they have indoor. They plug there, they have nothing but trouble. So just to give you an idea, we did ask that question moving forward. So I think this replacement of the garage is going to be temporary for these three vehicles, and then hopefully we'll have a new facility built in the next 18, I mean, two years. Please continue, Council Bearbu.
No, that answers my question. But still, those three vehicles, even in the upgrade on that garage, are still going to have to be plugged in, correct?
No.
No?
Nope.
So those computers won't die in the garage?
Nope. They generally, if they're parked in the garage, they shut them down, or if, like I said, they pull in, they're not in there long enough to drain. It's an overnight, you're looking probably four to six hours of a car idle that the battery drains.
Okay, so you're assuming that those cars would be pulled from that garage within that timeframe, so they will keep charging your computers and stuff, and even if they've been shut down.
Absolutely. Our call volume, very rarely would there be a car sitting in there with a computer up for four to six hours.
Thank you. That answers better my question I had. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. One moment. Sherri and Britt, when do we have to finalize the budget? When's the last day?
The last day is after the, you have a truth and taxation hearing, and then it is December 30th. It has to be into the state.
Okay, so, I mean, I would ask that, and I know this is an initial burden, but it warrants an investigation, not investigation, an inquiry, or a way to maybe look at some options and some innovative ways to look at other areas with respect to the fire department, the ambulance, and for the police department as well, you know, to see if there's some partial investment that they can make within the current structure of their budget, or if there's other way, creative ways that we can, we can use to address the needs of the police department and the needs of the fire EMS. Sherri?
And rightly so, Mayor and Council. It's not like we just came today with no ideas. In fact, we did. We got creative. We have a plan and then a backup plan. And that is, because she is, when I say she, the police department is still under budget, we can restrict $30,000, $35,000 from this year's budget to put, it's got to be restricted, though, to put towards a new squad for next year. If by chance, you know, we end up getting a full staff and, hey, we've blown our budget, it's, we've met the expense of all, I did talk with Britt, and we came up with the fact that there is enough money in the contingency fund that we budgeted that we could take out and still have over $130,000 in there for next year. So that would be our backup plan. And then just hope that, yeah, we get this lease in and we get the funds in the right way, and hopefully, no, we wouldn't have to use from the contingency. hopefully, no, we wouldn't have to use from the contingency.
I'm confident, Sherry, like I said, to reiterate, the end report for October 31st this year, the police budget is at 83.32 with five payrolls left. That's, as of October 31st, $609,282.80 I'm still allocated for the year, so conservatively, there's gonna be two, $250,000 left in my budget, if not more.
And, and that's related to particularly the shortage in your staff?
Shortage in the staff, yes.
So, so that, you know, because you don't have that, you know, we're gonna make adjustments. So I like, I like that idea of how you creatively work on that. So if you could work that out for us and come back to the council about, you know, what you've done to resolve the police department issue, and any, any information you have with respect to leasing an ambulance, or whatever creative method can be used to help so we can stay with inside the budget as much as we can moving forward, Sherry?
And, and I do like that, Mayor, on the leasing of an ambulance, that, this is the first I've heard of it today. So if Deputy Chief Scott Frederiksen can get me some information, maybe that is something we just build right into the ambulance budget every year.
Well, you can discuss that with your Chief, Chief Frederiksen and your staff, and see if you can come up with something for our Finance Director and our City Administrator to take a look at, thank you. First, Council Paulson, and then back over to Council Johnson, Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that we wanna kinda massage that, but if Chief Mattson is confident, would it be something we could move on today in this special meeting? Then I would move to approve the lease of a new Dodge Durango with the package to completely outfit it for the department.
And, and so moved and supported, moved by Council Paulson, supported by Council Johnson for the discussion, you know, it'll be up to how much?
Forward.
Okay, thank you.
For now, we'll just include it in the budget for...
Thank you. Thank you, Britt, okay, very good, it's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? You have the proper motion? Thank you, moved and supported, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. And just a quick note, when you have your next qualification for firearms, please let me know, thank you very much, okay? Thank you very much, Council Johnson?
I have, I have two things. One, Chief Frederiksen, Deputy Chief Frederiksen. We are doing a lot of non-emergent transport from Virginia to Duluth. What percentage of our, can you estimate about what percentage of our road trips are just transfers, no need for high-level medical care?
You're asking how many patients from Ascension, Virginia are non-emergent to other places?
This percentage, like, like, like half of the rides we're doing are non, are just transfers for someone who needs surgery, or... And I'll, I'll, I'll tell you why. Do we need a fully 100% $250,000 ambulance to be transporting people back and forth to Duluth? Or is there another option just for transports that would, that would be as effective but less costly? Like, I'm, I'm trying to think of, why are we always sending all of our advanced life support ambulances to Duluth on somebody who has a broken leg who needs surgery?
We have entertained that prior, there's different sprinters, there's smaller rigs. What due to some of our maintenance issues, you know, we'd never know which one's going to be next. Just being rural EMS, we could go, it's non-emergency things turn into emergencies so often in my seventeen-plus years here. We do have, just in the last handful of years, it was medic, medic. All of us were fire paramedics, and all of us were on all calls, and we've, well, we can get by with basic life support. Blated that down a little, I, I'm fearful to continually do that, because it's, the cost difference isn't worth the risk. Those sprinters, those smaller ambulances are still very expensive, we might be $50,000. Wear and tear, I mean, those highway miles, a lot of miles on those smaller rigs, these new ones have the support systems, this, everything, that they last longer too.
Okay. And I appreciate that.
We balance, every time we look into it, we have demos up here.
Probably ask that question again next year, but I, I think it's, it's just a, you know, being creative in how that looks.
Yes.
So, and the other thing that this is not, you can, thank you. The other thing that I think that we forget is that a budget is a living document. We, every year seem to focus the last month and a half of the year about hammering on this budget. But we should be looking at it regularly and seeing where we need to adjust and how to put money in someplace else. When, when you need more money somewhere, you adjust it, you, you take out of, out of the capital equipment if we have more overtime or whatever, so just something to think about as we continue to move on, is that budgets are supposed to be living, changeable documents and not set in stone. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, and I, and I think that has always been that way. Our, our staff has been working as, this as a living budget, it continues to live and thrive and adjust, that's why we're here today to accomplish that goal and objective in respect to the budget, so Council, thank you, Council Johnson, Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would agree, I, I think we need to visit this, the 20-year capital, lay the wishlist, and then kinda go through each department head and say, what is the, what are the necessities for public safety, for maintenance on vehicles, like snowplow vehicles, or things that our city can't operate and they are a necessity, and I'm sure each department head has specific necessities and could also compartmentalize things as wish, wishes. That being said, and I don't wanna bring this up lightly, this is a bigger conversation, but we are now running up against a clinic lease, if I'm not correct, that will be expiring the end of this year. Is it this year, or is it, I believe it is this year?
'23?
December 31st?
I believe it may be this year, Mayor.
Is it this year? Okay.
And that's revenue then, that, the bond will be paid, I think the, the bond already is paid, is, no?
The bond won't be paid till 2023 or 2024, 2025?
But the lease expires, so we have a gap.
Yes. We do.
So, that's something that we need to address, which we should have, not that that, I mean, if we're talking about emergency services and we're talking about the lease, what's the bond payment, what's the lease? And then, is there any additional that we could then move? The, the difference of those dollar amounts, I don't know if they're paying just the bond?
They're, yeah, the lease payments right now, Council?
Just the bond payment?
Go towards the bond payments, and so that's why it is critical, because the bond goes out to 2025.
Right, and then that lease expires, so we need to either renegotiate a lease, and maybe that can be structured a little differently, I'm not sure. But I guess what I'm talking about, this is overall public safety, this is, you know, it's, it's emergency medical services, it's the clinic. It's overall, will impact our budget going forward. So I think we do need to bring that into our, our budgetary discussion, especially if that lease expires December 31st, I think that's pretty critical. And I can't remember the payment that's being made. But if the city's on the hook to pay that bond payment and the lease expires, that's gonna dwindle from what account, I'm not sure. And then the other thing that I noticed, and, and this is a little off-topic from the fire department, and maybe let me wrap up, Deputy Chief Frederiksen. If you could maybe get that information regarding a lease on a, on an ambulance? What the terms of the lease would be, what the mileage would be, all of the, all of the above? And then what the warranty coverage would be, and the, I guess that would probably be a state bid similar to what Chief Mattson does. But I'm just assuming something, I'm not, I don't know that for a fact, but if that information can be brought before we have to make the decision on the budget, that would be, I would appreciate that. And then, the other thing that I noticed on, on 2022, from the, from the list that Sherry you had given us, and I, I think this was a month and a half ago. Now, under the HVAC, or the, excuse me, it says the City Hall Buildings Air Exchanger was at $50,000. And now it says Air Exchanger HVAC upgrades $100,000. So are those upgrades necessary when we had, the, the last one a month and a half ago just said Air Exchanger? So where is the, is the HVAC the one that's in the police garage that got damaged?
No, it's, it's actually here at City Hall, and I did work with Kurt Kessenin, and he did check with, is it Amerisco? That actually first kinda gave us a heads up that that was gonna have to be changed. And they were willing to, they gave us a quote, and it was right at around $100,000.
Okay, and was that able to wrap and roll into the Ameresco package?
This is above and beyond, we're done with that Huntington lease, we, it's a separate lease now.
So even though that they earmarked or they, they said it was gonna need maintenance, they didn't include that in
No, right.
Our original?
It was after the fact, after we did the
When they did all the walkthroughs?
Huntington back, yeah.
Okay, and is there any way to submit that to them, to maybe change that, or no?
Separate payment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Council Paulson.
I wanna talk about, Sherry kinda mentioned the roof a little bit too. This, earlier this year, remember, we had those really, really strong winds? We had a portion of the roof right above the engineering office, or the community development office, that kinda lifted a little bit, so we had to have a company come repair the roof over there. And while they were up there, they said, "Do you realize you have a serious problem on your roof, and you probably need to replace the entire thing within the next couple of years? Not immediate today, but you need to look at it soon here." And so then we had a couple of companies give us a quote, and Sherry, what was it, $250,000? $250,000 for, for the entire roof? So that's why we, we know in the next two years, we're probably gonna have to replace the City Hall roof for $250,000. Just kinda in the back of your mind, think about that a little bit too.
Okay, so a quick question before I go back to the fire department, so this roof thing? I mean, when the winds blew the part of the roof out, are there any insurance recovery costs with respect to that?
Yes, we did submit it to insurance, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so that was, we had that portion replaced that blew off. But they said you have some serious damage from, just from, it's a, is it rubber roof, Bill? Yeah. Yeah, and it's just old, it's old, 40 years old? Eighties? It's just getting up there.
Thank you. So, before I go to Council Johnson, this public safety thing, when you're looking at vehicles, you can't buy a used squad car. You can't buy a used ambulance, unless you're like a little township where you, you know, maybe use it, you know, once or twice a month. So you don't buy used vehicles for public safety, so that's why we're talking about buying new vehicles. Now, our Public Works Department has needed a lot of new pieces of equipment over time, and has been on the wishlist and on the need list. And Ed, we have Ed here, and Ed's been very creative in how he purchases equipment. If we don't have new equipment available, he, as the department head, seeks out opportunities that maybe we have to buy used grade, it only has $300 on it, or whatever. And so instead of buying new, he's able to find something that's functional over a long period of time, which is unique to that department. Not only is credit given to Ed about being able to do that, and, and finding the creative ways to do it, it's, within his department, that's possible to do. Not with fire and police, you can't buy a used vehicle, you can't buy used equipment. And so, I think we were talking about other things before, so I always wanna stay on topic with rest of police and fire, and I think those are necessary moving forward. So Sherry and Britt, thank you very much, creative ways in which to accommodate the goals and objectives of our, our public safety. So, did you have something to comment before we go to Council Johnson?
No, I just, when you're ready, we'll move on with Ed.
Okay, soon. Hopefully, Ed, you know, the wheels of city government move slowly, and we really need to vet this out, so that's why you're here today, thank you, Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, and my, my comment is to the HVAC system in City Hall and the request we made at the last council meeting. How much do we invest in the current system before we need to convert over from STEAM to another, another system? I know that we want to be loyal to our public utilities, but is the $100,000 we're investing in the HVAC gonna be thrown out in three to five to eight to 10 years because we have to convert from STEAM? So, you know, I, I think that's something we, we really need to know, how long will City Hall be able to stay on the STEAM system? If it's indefinitely great, I love STEAM, I wish I had my STEAM. But if not, in order to, to plan accordingly, we need to have a timeframe so we can budget every year for that major expense, which probably will end up being more bonding. But if it's bonding and we're gonna bond in two years, we need to know that for that, in two years, so that we can be looking forward. So, just wanted to put that out there as well, that we are actually already starting that process to figure it out, but we need to stay on it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Johnson, but before we move on to the next department head meeting, presentation or request, we'll go back to Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one last question for Deputy Chief Frederiksen. Did that grant ever pan out that you had applied for, for the ladder truck? So we, we did not qualify for that grant. Okay, that was my next question, so, so there, there is a resubmission opportunity, and in February. And then, when you do that, would it be possible for you to send that to Pam so she can distribute it to the council? Just so that we have it on our radar, and even if we need our lobbyists to help out with something like that, that might be something we could do as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Paulson, thank you, Assistant Chief Frederiksen. Anything else on the council with respect to public safety, police and fire? Okay, we've made a motion to approve, to special counsel, and we will move forward, Chief Mattson and Assistant Chief Nicola. And then we're doing some creative information to be bringing back Assistant Chief Frederiksen for us to consider with respect to the ambulance, so thank you very much for that. And so, anything else for, on our public safety? Okay, well, we talked a little bit about the roof and administration, so let's move on to the next presenter, if we may, and maybe Ed Alto for Public Works. Ed, do you have anything that you'd like to talk about, offer, request, or have concerns with respect?
Couple of things.
All right, thank you, very good.
Last October, when I left, we had put in our wishlist for a dump truck, and a plow and a sander for 2022, which has been moved to 2023, which is fine, we can get by. But what I would suggest we do, as soon as the state bid list comes out this year, that we price this out, put the package together, and order it. You're not gonna get it till 2023. It's gonna take over a year to put this package together and have this truck built. That would be something I think we should start moving on right away, and the new guy can follow up with it. And when 2023 comes up, we'll reevaluate and see what we need then. We would be replacing a 20, or 2002, excuse me, truck. It'll be over 20 years old by the time we get the new one.
Ed, that, is that a trade-in?
No.
We were gonna move that one to the park, Sherry, if you remember, the park one, the park is already called Dibs and the 20-year-old truck.
It'll be recycled. That's the biggest request, is to get this going, because you cannot buy equipment right now, it takes that long to get.
Well, if you hold that first part of your presentation, looking for council action or council discussion about this request, Council Johnson?
How, how do we budget that then, Sherry? What does that look like?
This is an easy one, okay? Because at least I know the dollar amount now, if he goes and gets a quote or package put together, we know what the dollar amount is, so we can budget for 2023. And I know that Council Bearbu, I totally agree with you, don't like to go out and buy things on credit or bond. But our 2012 bond, equipment bond, actually expires February 1st of 2023. I just think it's prudent to do something like this, that if we don't get the grant for the ladder truck, that's $1.5 million. I know we don't have that, I mean, I hate to see us sucking out of savings to buy something like that, I'd rather... This is just me personally, I would rather bond, it's similar to a lease, the payments are easier to make. And that's where I would probably put the $375,000 truck, sander, plow.
And so, you'll, you'll have, being the Finance Director, which we implore you to do, as well as our City Administrator, to look at those ways in which you can accomplish that goal and objective at the same time. It doesn't affect Gatsby, it doesn't affect anything else, we have the bond if we need to use it. But the goal and objective here, the request by our Public Works Director, is to order it now, because we're not gonna be able to get it in 2023. So if, if we do budget it in 2023, then we're not gonna get it till 2024. And so, right, we're And so right, we're, we're, we're in, in interesting times, so they say. So, uh, Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I would move that we direct, uh, the city administration and department head to, uh, start the process of, when the new list comes out, to start the process of getting the new sanding truck, truck with all the bells and whistles needed.
A move by Council Johnson is their support. Uh, support by Council Barnzelli, any further discussion? Uh, first Council Beyondich and then Council Paulson, Council Beyondich.
Sherry, do we know how much our garbage and our, um, fees come in to help offset some of the costs at City Garage?
Yes, we do, but that's an enterprise fund and what Ed's asking for will actually come out of the general fund.
Okay, how is that enterprise fund doing?
It's doing quite well, but if you notice too, that we did purchase some, uh, recycling truck and a garbage truck.
Garbage truck and a recycling truck, that comes, both of those come out of that enterprise fund.
Thank you.
Sweeper, we did a lease.
So this is separate, uh, part of it, right?
This would be.
Thank you, so.
Thank you.
Has it been supported? Yes, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion, Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Ed, this is the five-yard truck with the plow, correct?
And a sander.
And, and the sander. Is, is there, because it's all, um, it was broken out and if it was possible in 22, that it was three hundred, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-five thousand for the five-yard truck with plow and pothole patcher? Excuse me, what is the breakout for the plow truck and the sander?
Can't tell you that right now. I can't tell you that right now. The, the new prices haven't come out yet.
We're guessing it's about three seventy-fives, what we're thinking is what, about that price range.
That's a ballpark figure that we threw out there. Based off what we bought the last time, but right now, it's a roll of dice. I mean, you, you can't, you can't predict.
And the motion is to start the process for purchasing it 2023, so.
And then you can come back and we'll give you the hard prices once we, we know them.
So we have the motion on the floor, so we can start the process, so we can ensure that in the event that it is approved, uh, that it will be able to be able to, uh, take delivery on it by 2023. So, uh, Council Bearbu.
Yeah, and Ed is doing a very smart thing here because if he locks in the price on a, on a bid right now for that sander, uh, the company that has this is going to have to live by that bid, even if the supply chain raises the prices. I ran into that situation when I put a Jerrax system in, they held their price and it took an extra six months to get it, but they held their price. So this will be a savings in the end.
Yeah, thank you, Council Bearbu. It has been moved and supported to move forward and authorize public works to start the process of, uh, pricing out in, uh, the, uh, new center, uh, truck, plow and the, the whole package. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, I'm sorry, uh, Sherry?
Wait till your motion is done.
Okay, uh, hearing no other further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Sherry?
Questions for Ed. Ed, how much is the pothole patcher? How much is that?
I haven't looked at that either.
That's another separate item that we would have to budget for 2023. It's a really needed item.
Correct, but that is something off the state bid list too, which I don't have the numbers for that yet.
A ballpark, a hundred thousand?
Depends on, there's so many of them out there.
Thank you.
We stick with the same one that we have that was just, just a heater. Yeah, they're cheap, but we were looking at something a little bit better setup.
Higher quality.
Don't have any potholes in town anyway, so.
Excellent. It's not, not only do you have to have the equipment and the proper equipment, you have to have the crew to operate it too, right?
Exactly right.
Very good, thank you. Anything, okay, next item, Ed, anything else?
That was it.
Wow.
I'm easy.
You are?
One thing I want to bring to your attention with Freddie and Matty and, uh, these ambulances and the cop cars. You got to remember, it's not just the miles, it's the idle time on those engines too. There's a lot of hours on these things and that's what you have to look at. It's not so much going up and down the road, it's the idle time on those motors, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, uh, appreciate it very much. Okay, um, so anybody else want to come up? Jody, do you have anything you'd like to discuss with respect to your budget with, uh, within the council? Any issues that you have, any, uh, as you look at your budget, uh, anything you'd like to add, any comments you'd like to make?
Um, we just are looking, I guess for capital wise, we are looking at replacing our carpet. And we're doing a three-year plan, um, working with both, um, you know, with city administrator and with our finance director, knowing that that needs to be done. Um, there is some money set aside for children's and we will start that process this week. We're going to actually give an updated quote because there is a system that, believe it or not, that will lift up the shelving units and do the carpet that way so we don't have to take everything out. So I'll get an updated quote hopefully this week for the whole building. Because if we do the whole building at once, it is a very large chunk of money, so. That's our only capital one at this point in time. I don't know if anybody has any other questions about our budget that I can answer?
Well, first.
I do, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Um, and during COVID times, we laid off our part-time staff. She had two casual, um, what's their titles, Jody, again? They were called library aides?
Yeah, I would call them library aides in the realm of the library.
They were laid off when the COVID pandemic started and they never were hired back because they were cut from the budget in 2021. Sherry was able to put them back in the budget in 2022, so Jody will be coming to the next personnel meeting, whenever that is, to ask to rehire those, to advertise and rehire them again. They are in, in the budget, in the, um, operating portion of the budget, not capital. But I just wanted to point that out to everybody that Sherry did build them back in again for 2022.
Thank you, Britt.
We'll need those as we continue to do our programming and get outside of the building. And also just to maintain really good customer service because that is, you know, to make sure we're meeting the needs of those who are coming in the building and also being able to, um, keep doing what we're doing.
Those, those are the very part-time?
Yes.
Sixteen hours a week, student workers, usually after school?
Yeah, we're looking for after school and for our Saturday hours to help cover with that because when we have our staff that we have, we have to, you know, forty hours a week. So if they work Saturday, we have to give them time off during the week. If somebody gets sick, it's a whole thing and, you know, it's that time of year, it's going to happen.
Okay, we're going to go to Council Bearbu in just a moment, but I have a quick question for you. Well, first of all, I really have a statement to make. Said, I know that we discussed this early on in the budget process. We're all aware that these carpeting were replaced and that it was an incremental increase. And I know that's plugged into the budget, which is a good thing. I just want to say thank you because I had the opportunity to come in and, and of course, I come to the library a couple of times a week, just to look around and things of that nature. But you gave me a nice tour of what we needed in there. The carpeting is atrocious, it has to be replaced. So you're taking, you know, the, the, the steps necessary in which to maintain the integrity of that facility, so thank you for that, Jody.
I'm going to, I'm going to give a plug to Ed who just left. Um, we've been doing some painting and it makes a huge difference. So if you come downstairs, it's a lot brighter, we'll put up our pictures back up and everything, but, so that's, and that's what we're also in the process of doing.
Fantastic, thank you. Uh, Council Bearbu?
Jody, just a quick question for you. Want to replace that carpet or are you going to replace it with carpet squares like they have on the new mech and stuff? So if you get wear, because there's wear in some areas and there's not wear in other areas. And those are easy to replace as long as you order some extras when you, uh, first do that and store them someplace. That's what they did for the, not the mech anymore, the iron range, uh, iron trail motors in the center there.
Yes.
But that would be my suggestion because they're doing that all over the place now, using those squares and they hold up just as well. We did it here in city hall, I believe, didn't we, Britt?
Yep, that's usually the case with commercial flooring. And so I would anticipate that that's what our quote will be when we meet with, um, a meeting with Hiller tomorrow morning. He will be in the library to update our quote.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks for your time and your patience waiting.
No problem. Any others? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you. As they stay in the barber chair, next, Bill, you got anything that you'd like to add with respect to the, the code department planning? And then we'll go also to, uh, to Mr. Sullivan too as well and see if there are any questions, comments or requests. Bill, welcome.
There I am. When we rebuild the new garage out here, we do have in the budget for either a hybrid electric vehicle or a full electric vehicle. If we could get a charging station in that garage for the vehicle, our truck will go down to Public Works and be used down there. I just thought it'd be nice to start getting a little greener around here. But just kind of a wish list for the construction of the new garage. Roof on the building, I wouldn't put it off two years. Who is the lower roofs on the back of the building? Those leak. Back in the old Vida office was the assessor's office. Every spring during the summer, it's a thirty-gallon garbage can sitting back there catching water.
I didn't realize that, wow.
It, I wouldn't put it off two years. My recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything our department can do?
We have in the Capital Outlay Furniture also. We, I finally are going to give them actual furniture, not the drafting desk that they've been using for thirty years. Actual ergonomic furniture in their office.
The old drafting table and task stool, that works great for me. Working at one for forty years. Are different and they like to be ergonomically correct.
Well, I, I think those requests are, you know, we're going to have to budget for those, particularly for the roof as well. And you have budget in, in some ergonomically correct, uh, new staff. I, I, in my opinion, I'm not, it's my personal perspective, that entire room up there needs an over, uh, what do you call it, a makeover, so to speak. So I know you worked starting with that, with the equipment and those kind of things. So I think that's very important moving forward. And I really like the idea of, of, of starting, uh, moving toward the greener environment when we can. This electric vehicle idea that you have is really a great idea. And I don't see any, from my perspective, and we could probably factor that in in the bid process when you bid on the new garage, to make sure we have a charging station available for that purpose. Because you're not going to be able down to the municipal parking lot to charge your vehicle, it'll take seven hours and eighty-six minutes in order to do it, so. All right.
In that vehicle, I'd like to get the GPS system in it so I know where it is all the time. Well, I won't be here, but we'll know where it is.
Well, I beg to differ. We, we, we don't want you to, you'll be here. Anyway, please continue.
And as part of our new software system, we'll probably install a computer in it that we can interface directly with staff in city hall while we're out doing the inspections. And like police and fire, you want that computer running all the time. And I think with an electric vehicle plugged in in a garage, I'd have no problem with it.
And there are so many options about being able to acquire a vehicle. There's a lot of grants available, even though we, if we, I mean, I'm sure we would probably budget it. But I mean, there's a lot of opportunities to become more green in that regard, so, Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would think we have the opportunity to find some grants for green technology, um, with, as moving forward. My other question is about the roof. Is there the opportunity to, when, when we do the roof, to provide better insulation? Like, i- is that something that we should be looking at when we're looking at both the main roof and then the other structures?
Absolutely. Because all of the insulation has been saturated up there, it will be removed. And at that point, you will need a structural engineer to take a look at the condition of all of the trusses up there and see what they can carry. At that point, the amount of insulation we can put on there can be determined.
Okay, that answered my other question. Thank you very much.
And I think there's that new technology out there about instead of fiberglass insulation or whatsoever in there, old, it's batting insulation, whatever. There's a new type of insulation that they put in there that's, that replaces fiber and it's more amenable to, uh, repelling, uh, moisture. So I know that you have that, uh, ability through your process in which to do that, so, uh, thank you.
Right now, it's a polyisocyanurate insulation that's placed on top of the roof deck. The insulation is cut so it pitches to all the roof drains. Bill, one of the more prevalent ways to insulate a roof, but like you say, there's new things coming down the pike all the time that could be better, uh, look into that in the spring.
Thank you, uh, very much. Anything else? That's not, uh, that we can't budget for, haven't budgeted for, for you, uh, in that regard. I know you have a wish list of things, but the, what's the essential?
We did bring up the HVAC system in the building. I realize what we're talking about is, has nothing to do with the second floor of this building. And as you've all noticed, the second floor of this building, I don't want to call it a sick building, but it's not.
Healthy.
And the amount of money that's budgeted for it, of course, will not cover anything on the second floor.
Interesting.
At some point, you're going to want to look at that. You know, years ago, I talked to a couple of architects on, okay, we don't want to lose historical look of the building, but the system that we have from the old heating system for it, they can't use it. And we certainly don't want spiral pipes running around, below the ceiling around here like you see in grocery stores and everywhere.
So a question I would have for you is that would it be prudent for us to do a comprehensive investigation in the, uh, inspection of the needs are and correlate between and synergize the two, between the HVAC system and the roof? And how that can be accomplished and get an entire picture of what we're going to need in order to accomplish the goals and objectives you outlined to us today?
Depending on the amount of insulation we get on the roof will change the dynamics of a heating, ventilating and air conditioning system.
Right, right. So do you think it would be prudent for us to do a comprehensive plan to address those issues before we, you know, decide what kind of HVAC system we're going to work with and how that works with a, uh, roof replacement?
A good idea. I believe it's somewhere around three and four million for your building.
Uh, that's why I think we need a comprehensive investigation with respect to that, so.
And I understand we're going to be the way we are for the rest of my time here.
Sure. Well, it's good that we got the fire department here because that gas was a loss of oxygen. We probably would have needed some here if it, if it would have been any higher. But no, I, we completely understand that.
That would be the ballpark you would be looking at to convert this building from your steam system to a brand-new HVAC system that will take the dust out of the air and give you pure air breathe.
You know, and, and that's public infrastructure. Uh, there, there's opportunities to look at other funding sources for that. I think that's why the comprehensive plan to determine what the actual cost is to do the entire thing will give us, uh, you know, some documentation and move forward with a request, some evidence or some, something that justification to ask for, uh, uh, funding outside the, uh, uh, to the general fund.
Remember the Northland building and what we went through there?
Mm-hmm, thank you. Uh, Council, uh, Beyondich?
Thank you. Sherry?
Close your ears, Charlie. Looks like a bond is in emin.
We have too many of those out now.
Actually, they should be falling off here.
I know, I agree. Go ahead, nope, that was it, nope. Well, we have, we all, we have to look at all those things, whatever their options are available, how we accomplish this. Because, you know, this is going to be a, a, a long-term solution for, if we're going to keep this building operating, right?
There it is.
We don't want our employees to get sick, we want to, uh, air. We want an air-breathing quality system. I mean, I know we did that at the county courthouse when I was working downstairs in the Sheriff's Department. When they had the mall in the middle, everybody's getting sick. And all of a sudden, they said, well, maybe we should come in and inspect this. And come to find out the air quality was so bad that we had to move the offices over to the old armory when it was available. So, I mean, we know, that's the importance of making sure that gets done.
It's, it's one of those things, when you start, you commission the design teams that you need to look at it and give you an estimate.
Yeah.
Mine was a real rough estimate. I think I had included windows because it cooled the building where wind blows and the shades rattle.
Well, let's, let's direct if we can. I don't know if we need a motion to do so or ask if we do to direct staff and for you to find out whatever the proper protocol is to move forward to do a comprehensive study to determine what we actually need, how much it may cost. And then once we have that information in hand and approximation, we can use that information to look for other funding sources. Counsel Bearable.
Yeah, I don't know whether this council's been looking at the information that's been coming forward from RAMS. Have you been looking at that? There's a whole ton of federal money right now coming down that addresses some of these exact things. And it's not in the millions of dollars. It's a billion-plus dollars. We should be looking at those things. And that's money that's going to the state and then being divvied up. And we should try to get our requests in to the state for those. Because they're going to divvy it up all over the state. And I don't know how they're going to divvy it yet, but we've been looking at that pretty steadily. And I think, Pam, you've distributed most of that information to the council already. If you haven't read your stuff from RAMS, please read it because it's broken down somewhat, how it can be used and what.
And speaking with our lobbyists the last week, Mike gave me a call on another matter, on more of a charity matter that we're involved with. But it's, he said, whatever requests we need, you know, let them know and he'll help bring it forward. And he'll work with Britt and our staff in which to accomplish that. But I think in order to access those funds, we can apply for them. But they're going to want some kind of a documentation as to what are you looking at, what's the replacement, how are you going to process it. So by, if we were to direct staff and to try to put something together, at least, you know, as much as we can in order to accomplish that so we can submit that to the state. Wouldn't go to the feds, wouldn't go to our US representative, but it'll go to our state representatives and moving forward. And when the governor was here visiting the fire department and was in support of the process of putting that new fire hall station together, he says, this is what we're called. He says, I don't call it bonding money, I call it public infrastructure. So if there are needs that a community has, and he talked about that federal funding, make sure they get it to the state. And he told me that directly. So this is a goal and objective that we need to accomplish in order to get, send that money. We need to have some kind of a process in place. So I know Britt and Sherry, I know this is a, you know, your plates are full, but if there's a way that we can start this process and investigate and find a whole comprehensive approach to this roof and the HVAC system and maybe have that, some of those numbers available, whether they're rough or not, and the request in, you know, to meet the requirements and guidelines of any money that's going to be allocated through the state. Thank you.
I was just going to mention that, so what we need to do, get this stuff moving and get information. Because I don't remember when the state legislature meets this year. I don't, I think it's January this year.
Yeah, after January 20th, it's right in that area. And they are going to have a bonding bill this year too. So that's, that's helpful as well. Okay, before we go to Sherry, let's go to Counsel Johnson. And then back over to Sherry. Counsel Johnson.
Just to make it official, I would move that we ask staff to come together with an outline of how we move forward on the process so that we know what it's going to cost us to get the formal investigation or whatever that is.
Okay, the motion is to direct staff to meet with and develop and present a comprehensive plan with respect to the HVAC system and the roof and all the moving forward with that request. Is that kind of what you're, in a nutshell, thank you. Is there support? Support by Counsel Paulson? You have that motion? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Well, I look forward to the renovation.
Thank you very much. Now, Sherry?
Yeah, I would ask that Bill Cole would work with me and Britt and Kirk Kessinen and John.
And Matt Reed.
Yeah, Pat. And Matt Reed. And so we can get an actual dollar amount in a package put together so we can get Charlie to be our.
Well, I think that was, that was the purpose of Counsel Johnson's motion to accomplish all that. So thank you. All right. Anything else from, in that regard?
You still talking about budgets?
Yep, there's more.
Counsel Freely?
Mayor, I haven't said a word today because I didn't know what to say. And part of it is, you know, I want to thank Sherry and Britt. I mean, budgeting is a very difficult, long-time, arduous process where you're dealing with finite revenues for infinite requests for expenditures. I mean, that's just the reality of it. And it is troubling, I'm sure, especially when you talk about public safety, to not be able to be budgeted for something that you really think is an absolute need. I understand that. But I think a job is well-done with regard to this budget. And unfortunately, we don't get everything we want. But hopefully, we get as close as possible to everything we need on behalf of the city and the public safety in the city. So I just want to, I know people were kind of put on the spot at times and there was some tensionist discussions that were occurring, which are necessary and appropriate. And details were provided and looked through. But I thank them for their efforts. And I hope that we're able to move forward with budgeting accordingly for all of the departments to be able to serve the best interests of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Freely. One more department I think I'd like to hear from, or we'd like to hear from, is John Sullivan. John, do you have any, anything that would be pertinent to the budget or just any updates you have with respect to, you know, what our tax base increase is going to be for next year, like 50 million or something like that? No, John?
I'm not sure about the 50. Good morning, Mayor, thank you. I went over the budget for our department with Bill Cole. And we did discuss the equipment issues, the furniture and the building needs. And I fully anticipated that we would have to sit down and talk more about the sticker shock on the HVAC system and the roof. So I would certainly be willing to be a part of that and to try to come up with a solution for submitting a request to the legislature. And I can work with Britt and Sherry on that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Okay, we've heard from the department heads that could be present here today. We have a little bit of work to do. We have charged our administration with some additional requests with respect to that. And once again, I do echo Counsel Freely's comments as well. This is a tough process, you know. And I'm not saying that that's why you get the big bucks because, you know. But, you know, you work diligently, very hard for us, and we recognize that. We make sure that we do recognize that. And so, thank you for that, Counsel Freely. So before we move to the next item on the agenda, we're going to have, I would like to take a little bit of a break. But before we do that, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. When it comes to the teen center building, I know we were in a process with the Lyric. Where are we in that process of them taking over and us stepping back? As I see, we're still budgeting $10,000 for upgrades and stuff.
Yeah, because we're still under that direction that we had from the council a couple of years ago where they had a long list of repairs and we still budgeting for those repairs.
Okay.
Doing every year, working on the list of things that they wanted. Last, this year was the large air conditioner, the quieter one that they wanted. Last year was the water heater. So we're still working on that. And they're still saying that they're not ready to take it yet.
Okay. And I just ask that because I do know that they do a bunch of community stuff there. And it is, the after-school program is looking to fire back up again as it's appropriate. And that is the purpose of that building was to provide after-school and activities for kids. So I still think that they're, they're meeting the intent of why that building is in city ownership and utilizing it as best they can as opposed to it sitting empty and doing nothing, so.
They just hired an executive director and they will be having a coffee and very soon to have that meet and greet with that person. I think next week. It seems like the invitation, I'll send it out to everybody.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson.
Real quick, before we go to break, I just want to point out something that we didn't mention in the budget that I really want to applaud everybody here that if you'll notice in the revenue sheet, the very front, the page number two of your packet, under the debt levy, minors 2020 A and B bond, we don't have to levy this year because we have enough sales tax revenue that we don't have to levy for that. So we suspected that was going to happen and we thankfully don't have to levy for that. So just good news I wanted to point out.
Yeah, thank, kudos because, you know, it was projected but, and hoped that would happen. And it has come to fruition. So everybody's hard work with respect to that, thank you. Okay, before we move to the next item on the agenda, which is the contract with Iron Taro Motors Event Center, let's take a 10-minute break. And we'll come back. Thank you.